My name is Katie Treichler. I am a member of SirOptimus International of West Sacramento, and I would like to welcome you here tonight. SirOptimus is a service organization for business and professional women dedicated to improving the lives of women and children in our local communities and throughout the world. We feel it's very important that we understand the hot topics of the day, we understand the candidates' platforms, and that we all have the opportunity to understand what they will stand for and represent us as within our community. And I would like to welcome all of you here tonight, and I will turn the time over now to Denise Seals with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you all for being here, thank you for those that are watching this on tape delay. My name is Denise Seals, I'm the President and CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. We welcome your participation this evening, thank you all for coming. Thank our partners, SirOptimus, we've been doing this together for longer than a lot of us can remember, and are grateful for a really effective partnership. We want to make sure that everyone here in the audience knows that there is opportunity for you to participate as well. The candidates will have, each panel will have three pre-screened questions, and if you are interested in submitting a question, either for first the council panel and then the school board panel, if you'll raise your hand, a volunteer will bring you a request list, and a volunteer will come and pick that up from you and submit it to a group that will be screening all of the questions to make sure that we get all of the appropriate topics covered. It's a format that we've used very successfully in the past. So while I'm going to introduce our moderator and she'll go over the rules of the evening and what we can expect, and while we're doing that, candidates, if you'd like to take a seat, that would be great.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Denise stated, I will be, can you hear me okay? As Denise stated, I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. By way of background, my name is Jaclyn Powell. I am an attorney as well as the owner of Smith, McDowell &amp; Powell, which is a business litigation and transactional law firm located in Sacramento. Though my business is in Sacramento, I live in West Sacramento and represent a number of West Sacramento businesses. Now on for, onto the ground rules for this evening's event. The West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce and SirOptimus International of West Sacramento are sponsoring this candidates' forum to bring the business community and the residents of West Sacramento, together with political candidates, in a discussion of key issues. In the interest of fairness and in order to maintain an environment of polite, civil discussion, the following rules will be observed. One piece of campaign material per candidate is available on the back table. Banners, signs, posters, hats, or any other campaign material promoting one candidate over another is not permitted in the hall. Members of the audience will please refrain from applauding or doing anything visible or audible to express support or opposition to any one candidate during the forum. The order of opening statements was determined by acquaintance prior to the forum beginning. The order of closing statements will be the reverse of opening statements. Members of the audience, as Denise stated, are invited to submit written questions. Please complete the form available at the information table. One question per sheet, please. Each question will relate to one subject only and should be clearly stated. Questions will be screened by a nonpartisan committee in order to avoid duplications. Selected questions will be presented to each slate by the moderator as time allows. As for timing, in statements or answers that are two minutes or more, there will be three signals given to the candidates. The first when there are 20 seconds left, the second when there are 10 seconds left, and the third, a stop signal when the time has run out. I am being joined by Steve Roberts, who is a long-term West Sacramento resident who will assist me with keeping time. Now, I'd like to introduce the city council candidates in alphabetical order. We have William "Bill" Kristof, Council Member, City of West Sacramento, and Oscar "Viegas", Vice Mayor, City of West Sacramento.
Well, first of all, good evening and thank you very much for this opportunity. So just a little background about myself, I'm a lifelong resident of West Sacramento, was born and raised in this community. I've lived different parts of the community. My wife, Katie, and I have been married, next week we'll be married, 20 years, and we're proud parents of two teenage children that we raised here in West Sacramento. We've all actually been very active in our community for, well certainly the kids, for their entire lives, they've been active in their community, but Katie and I have also been very active. It goes back from me, back in the days of when I was actually in college, I was walking precincts for candidates and started my camp, my interest in civic government, local government here in West Sacramento by walking precincts for Bob Martinez, who was running for sheriff at the time. I was appointed to the Planning Commission in 1997. At that time, there wasn't a lot happening in West Sacramento relative to growth, but the opportunity was right around the corner, and the Planning Commission was fully immersed in a lot of dialogue and a lot of work relative to the city's general plan. Shortly thereafter, I decided to run for city council largely because I saw what the Planning Commission had dealt with, and the final result, that the buck was going to stop with the city council, and that's where the final decisions were going to be made that were going to affect our community forever. I ran on a platform, a very simple platform actually, to make or create better opportunities for kids. I felt that there was not sufficient opportunities for kids. I felt that the crime rate was unacceptable, we needed to do a better job of our public safety services. I felt that there were not adequate shopping opportunities in our community. I felt that the West Capitol Avenue needed to be cleaned up. And I also felt that there needed to be better relations with the school district. Immediately after getting elected, I worked, as many did, to affect all of those things. You fast forward to where we are today, and every one of those items has been addressed in a very serious way. We're not perfect, we're not there yet, but I have been a part of the community's leadership here in West Sacramento for nearly 12 years, being on the council, and I can say today that I'm very proud of the progress we've made. What I will promise to continue to do is exactly what I campaigned on, which are those items. Those items are very important to our community, and obviously, you know, there are unanticipated things that come our way in our community, as we've all been accustomed to, but I'm a very proud resident here of our community, and I look forward to working in this community for another four years. Thank you.
Good evening, and I'd like to also thank the Chamber and SirOptimus for the opportunity to speak to you, and the opportunity to have it videotaped, and so that it can go out to the community. The community can better understand what we're doing and what we stand for. My name is Bill Kristof. I was also born and raised here in West Sacramento. My wife Brenda and I, we have two children, and we are blessed with four grandchildren. They're, quite frankly, they're the light of our little lives right now. It's really a very, very unique experience. I'm retired, I worked for the United States Postal Service, I worked mainly in the Bright and the Broderick area, and I've got to know a lot of people through the tasks that I did. I would meet them across the counter, and we could talk about various issues and talk about different things, and it was really a very, very unique and strong experience. I graduated from Sacramento State University. My degree is in criminal justice, and I was elected to the first city council. We were elected in 1986, but we really did not take office until 1987. I have served on the council for 25 years, since its inception, and we have had numerous issues and things that have come up that we have decided to change. We felt the community really needed to change. The county was not supplying the proper amount of services that we as citizens thought, and that's why we incorporated. After the incorporation, a very good example of that would be, we had 17 police officers assigned to our area, and now we have, I think it's 73 within the police department. So I think the community has evolved into something that we're very, very proud of. And one of the real specific areas is the fact that West Sacramento was not really highly thought of in 1987, 1988. We have changed that. The city of West Sacramento is one of the communities that people look to first. They ask us, "How are you doing the good things you're doing?", and that really makes me feel pretty proud and makes me feel very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Mr. Myskaev, you have the floor for three minutes to state your platform.
Some people, they know me, sorry I'm late, a little bit late, but my name is Oleg Myskaev. Some people know me as a heavyweight champion from 2006 to 2008, WBC heavyweight champion, and I've been around the world and saw a lot of people, and have a great communication with the people. And in 2006, I moved to West Sacramento from New York. I'm a former Russian citizen. I came to the United States in 95, and my life was really rough, you know, I came with 500 bucks in my pocket, and I worked very hard, worked very hard to be a successful man. And like three times, you know, I couldn't achieve, you know, to become a champion, I always lost, and I lost my team, but I never give up, and I continue to fight, and hopefully in 2006, I became a champion because of my hard work. And in 2006, I moved in West Sacramento, and I fall in love with the city of West Sacramento. And I have a great communication with the people, you know, from West Sacramento, and people from Sacramento, and, you know, and Roseville, and the thing is what has to be done, and I'm here to help people, to sit down, to talk to the people, and hear people's voice, and this is my priority, that's what I have done for the last five years, and speak with the people and hear people, what people need, you know, they need help, you know, what can help. And I know there is a lot of things has to be done in West Sacramento right now because it's a high unemployment, and we have to invite small businesses in West Sacramento, and make sure, make sure people will be comfortable and work on the levees, because I have friends, you know, and they worry about levees, you know, they're afraid, you know, to move in West Sacramento because of that. Basically, I'm here to help people, listen to people's voice, and always, you know, will be available for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Myskaev. Now, we're going to move on to the three prepared questions. Each candidate is going to have two minutes to answer, one minute for rebuttal. The first question is going to be for Mr. Viegas, and then Mr. Kristof and Mr. Myskaev. Recognizing that the city of Sacramento thus far hasn't been able to develop, let alone implement, any solid plans related to streetcars and public transportation, river crossings, and civic amenities, what are your recommendations for a city of West Sacramento action plan of its own to address these issues?
Oh, that's a great question. So there are several things we're currently working on. It's going to be supply and demand, and obviously, the demand, the demand is going to have to be there. Let me back up. Measure G, in November, residents in West Sacramento are going to be given the opportunity to vote as an advisory measure that is going to allow, is going to support the current city council's interest in taking what was formerly the redevelopment agency properties and using the funds from those properties that the state is requiring us to sell to continue to invest in infrastructure, which is what we've been doing with our redevelopment agency. That infrastructure, if you go along the riverfront, you can see that we're now teed up to invite the kind of riverfront amenities that we've been looking for. So first of all, Measure G is going to be before the voters in November, so please consider that in supporting our efforts to continue to invest in our infrastructure. The voters also voted to extend a quarter cent sales tax a couple of years back. That quarter cent sales tax is going to do two things. One is to support our efforts to continue to do levy improvements, and also to support the streetcar. So that's well on its way. And the other thing is, I think, to indicate to the public and to the community that we are serious about our riverfront development by continuing to invest, you know, in the infrastructure, in the roads, the waters, the sewers, the streets, along the riverfront properties, to tee it up for development. And we've actually gotten a lot of interest recently to put together some nice projects that are going to come along, but I think in terms of what we can do, we're doing that right now. We are continuing to invest to make sure that we are ready to go, so when the economy turns around and those projects come forward, we're ready to accept them and ready to make them come out of the ground.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof?
Same question?
Same question.
Yes. The city of Sacramento and West Sacramento, we have been meeting on streetcar, and we have been meeting on bridge crossings. Both of those projects are extremely expensive, and we will certainly need federal assistance to complete any of those projects. The streetcar project is something that the council, I think unanimously, has endorsed. I think that the bridge crossings, we have endorsed a bridge crossing. Exactly where, we're really not sure yet. There are numerous meetings and things going on across the river, and so, once they finalize what their thinking is, we will chime in. And we have had some dual meetings. Broadway Bridge was one of the areas that has really tweaked some interest, and then another bridge, further north of the I Street Bridge, has also tweaked some interest. Sacramento, I think, would like to have something further north so they can enhance their rail yard, but quite frankly, they need to get their act together. I don't know what's going on over at the rail yard. All I know is what I read in the paper, and they seem to have a lot of different issues there. The city of West Sacramento, we have our act together. We received $21 million of state bond money to enhance the rivers area, or the, used to be called the Triangle, and that is where the streetcar would really assist things, but I know I'm running out of time, and this is a lengthy answer, but that was a great question.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Mr. Myskaev, same question.
I think, you know, and I'm sure, we need an extra source to fix that problem, and once again, I want to say that, you know, we have to find that source, and we have to bring to West Sacramento a lot of businesses, let people, you know, to be involved in West Sacramento, and especially, I think about to connect Jefferson to I-5 Street, that would be a great thing, you know, to help, you know, to bring people here, and work on the levees, because people, people, they worry about that, you know, and it's got to be done, you know, not by raising, raising taxes up, you know, because people already got hurt, and, you know, we have to find an extra source to work on that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viegas. Mr. Viegas, you have one minute for rebuttal.
I don't necessarily have a rebuttal, I guess, what I would just tag on to what I said earlier. You know, I think that the best that we can do in West Sacramento is to continue to invest in our infrastructure so that, as I said earlier, when the economy turns around, we are poised to take on those bigger projects. And your question started off with amenities such as the streetcar, and I think folks are oftentimes confused about what does a streetcar, how would it work, and what value would it have? And we've spent a lot of time in our community talking to other folks in other cities that have streetcars, and the potential value that it adds to the property, once you put a fixed rail line in your community, it exponentially grows the value of your land. So if you can, you can move people around, you know, in an area like our riverfront, those properties that are currently on the riverfront, they grow exponentially in their value, which allows them to do more, and allows us to, you know, receive the receipts from those, from those values.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, just to sort of keep going on that theme, the development community really seems to embrace what we're trying to do, because we know it's going to take federal dollars, and we know that, and state dollars. It's, the city of West Sacramento and the city of Sacramento together could not supply enough money for all of that kind of infrastructure, the streetcar and the bridge. We can put in roads and sewer systems and water systems, and that is something that we have done. So we have taken that $21 million that I talked about earlier, and we have invested it in the area. Now what we have to do is, we have to follow through with the commitment that we had made, that there will be X number of homes or townhouses, condos, whatever it is, constructed there. And so we are doing that, and we think that with that kind of, that kind of an investment, we will show that we're really interested in moving things forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. And Mr. Myskaev?
Just want to say a very simple thing, you know, a lot of things has to be done in West Sacramento right now, and I'm just want to say one thing, you know, it's about to fight with the limits, you know, and we have to find a special source, an extra source, you know, to finance the problem, you know, that's will be priority, my job, you know, to do that, and make sure to help people of West Sacramento and its city. So that's about it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The next prepared question is going to first be directed to Mr. Kristof. What are your thoughts and solutions for dealing with the ever-increasing transient homeless population throughout our city?
Homeless is a major issue. We've been trying to work with various homeless groups and associations, especially the Broderick Christian Center, but we also know that we cannot degrade the surrounding community. We are part of a consortium of organizations. The city, the county have been working, trying to work together to come to and find some type of a solution. It's a very difficult problem. We have some transitional housing. We think that transitional housing may be some part of the answer, but it is very, very expensive to build, and it doesn't supply the, it doesn't really supply the amount of housing that is needed for the number of people. We also have what we call the Indian Heritage Center, that is going to locate along the Sacramento River, and one of the things that I am hoping for, and that is that if that does pass, one of the things that I've asked the state to do is to make sure that they have rangers that patrol that part of the river, because we need to make sure that the homeless folks are not encamped in areas that become, that become disarray. So that is something that we, we really, really need to work on, and it's a very, very difficult issue, but we will tackle it, we will go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myskaev, same question.
There are people, and they need help, you know, and I know there is a situation that if we're going to do best for them, we're afraid that, you know, there will appear more people here. But one thing, there are people, and they need help, you know, and we have to do everything to take care of that. That will be great for the city and for the council.
Thank you. Mr. Viegas?
Yeah, as Bill said, it's a difficult issue for us. It's not as if we are dealing with it in isolation. We're, you know, our city is immediately adjacent to a large metropolitan area. Sacramento's been struggling with this for years and years, and so whatever we do, well, we have to, we have to remember that it doesn't just stop at the end of the river, I mean, we are adjacent to a large metropolitan area. I think as a small city, we take incremental steps, I mean, there's a series of things that we're currently undergoing, that are undergoing in our community. There are food closets, there are food distributions that are being, that are available, but again, it doesn't just end at the, you know, at our, at our city limits. This isn't the perfect solution, but we have made huge efforts to try to create affordable housing in our community. We have extensive affordable housing, to the chagrin of some, but I think it goes a long ways to try to address some of the, some of the homelessness issues that are in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof, would you like another minute to rebut?
Sure. Got a mic now?
Perfect.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I think it's...
Ten seconds, Bill, we better hurry.
We don't have a solution, but we know that we have a problem, and it is something that, quite frankly, we're putting it into, as we move forward, we put these kinds of problems in our budget, and so we're trying to find a solution to this problem, because it is an issue where you don't want to be an area that attracts everybody, because we do live right next to the city of Sacramento, which has a homeless problem that they've been trying to tackle for many, many years. And so, you know, we're trying to work with the county, and we're trying to work with other state agencies and other county commissions to see if we can find a solution, but it's something that we really want to, because it would have a very good impact on our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Mr. Myskaev, one minute.
Once again, I was raised in a family, long family, raised to love people, and I'll be there when people need help, especially these people, you know, and sometimes we have to take a risk, you know, to help people, that's very important. We have to find a solution, we have to find a source, you know, a financing source, and that would be great, and always be wide open for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viegas?
Yeah, just briefly, so it's not as if, though, we've turned our backs on it, but we do have a homeless strategy that we've been working on for some time. Councilmember Johannesen has been appointed as our liaison to a countywide homeless strategy that we've continued to embark on. So we are continuing to figure out ways in which to address the issue, but there's no magic pill, and we'll continue to chug along, as Bill said.
Thank you. Now, the final prepared question is going to be directed to Mr. Myskaev first. Throughout the region, as well as in the city of West Sacramento, average home prices have decreased in the neighborhood of 50%. Yet, unlike some other communities, the city of West Sacramento building fees have not been reduced accordingly. What is your proposal for bringing these fees in line with housing values?
Just say, like I said before, increasing, I'm against that, you know, because people already hurt, and I know about, you know, they're paying taxes, increasing taxes will hurt them more, and we're going to have more houses foreclosure, you know, that's the number one issue, you know, and I think, you know, what has to be done, we have to continue working with the people to help them, who financially, financially able be, you know, to just can't afford, so we have to work on the programs, you know, and help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viegas?
So this is, there's, it's a constant struggle to try and juggle the fees associated with construction. We deal with that from, well, Bill's been dealing with it since 1986, I'm sure. You can either always try to make the developers... sure. You can either always try to make the developers happy by creating low fees, but the downside to that is, you got to find other sources with which to pay for your roads, your sewer, your parks, your schools, your bridges, I mean, all the other amenities that people expect are going to come when new development occurs. So it's not as if though we just shut the door to that conversation, but we need to keep our eye on the bigger prize, which is not today, not tomorrow, but into the future. How do we make sure that we have the infrastructure, once again, available to make sure that we have a good community that's growing in the right direction? You know, we're constantly having the conversation about how to refine the fees. I don't know if there's ever a point where, you know, the development community is ever going to say, you know, "That's a great fee, and we're very excited about that." There's always going to be an opportunity for them to say, "Well, the fees could be lower." Well, of course, they could. But at the end of the day, the residents of this community would suffer from not having the amenities that we all have agreed to in the city's general plan that we want to see as we continue to grow. So it's a fine balance. I don't think they're so out of whack right now. I think we're doing fine. But we're always looking at them to see if there's other ways in which we can make ourselves a bit more competitive. But I think at the moment, frankly, I think we're doing okay.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof, you have one minute to rebut.
Fees are always a contentious issue when you're dealing with the development community. But it's like Oscar said, if you want parks, if you want adequate roads, if you want bridges, if you don't want congestion, if you want levy work, it's all part, everything is built into a fee structure. And we try to adhere to what the development community is saying, because we do want development. But at the same time, it can't be so cheap that the development doesn't take care of the needs of the community at large. One of the big, one of the fees that we have recently put on was a levy fee for flood protection. And it is something, quite frankly, the development community really embraced. Because they know that without adequate flood protection, this community, if it flooded, it would be absolutely devastating. And if FEMA were to say that our levies were not adequate enough to handle a certain flow of water, then they would require us to build a platform of 15 feet before you can put a structure on it. They would require higher flood insurance rates, and that would be absolutely devastating. That would stop growth in West Sacramento. If you just look across the river to what's going on in Natomas, some of that happened there. And they're working like heck to change it, and we're working like heck to not have it happen. So we're really trying to stay ahead of that. And that was just one of the fees that, quite frankly, development community embraced. And so it's, not all fees are bad, but at the same time, some of them are necessary. But we do need to look at them periodically.
Thank you. And I misspoke earlier. I said you had one minute, but you actually had two. So I don't want you to think we deprived you. We gave you two minutes.
I'm by the cards.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Mr. Myskaev, now you have one minute.
Once again, I want to say that I want to work very hard with the people. You know, we have many, we have some issues, you know, in the city with the levies, you know, and unemployment, and also to create a good relationship between parents, students, teachers, and community. That's number-one job, you know. We have to work with the youth, you know, and with the community, with the neighborhood, with the city. And just, once again, I'll be available to speak with everyone on the issues they have and work on that issue, not just promising. I'm just a man of dealing. I like to act, you know, to help people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Vegas?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. Mr. Kristof? Okay. Now we will be moving on to written questions from the audience. It looks like they're almost done sorting. Just so the audience knows how this is going to work, I'm going to announce the questioner's name and then read the question. Each candidate is going to have two minutes to respond if the question is directed to the entire panel, and then one minute to rebut. If the question is actually directed to an individual candidate, that individual candidate will have, I believe, two minutes to answer, and then the rest of the panel will have one minute to rebut, and the question will go back to the original recipient. And they will have 30 seconds to rebut. The first question is from Charlotte Dorsey regarding transportation. What are your thoughts on transportation for seniors? Are we prepared for the increased need in the future? This question will be directed first to Mr. Vegas.
Ah, well, let's see. Goodness, that's a tough one. So I currently sit on the Yolo County Transportation District representing the city of West Sacramento. And transit is a tricky one. We are, you know, the bus system that we have, that we currently utilize as part of the district, services the whole community. And we're constantly trying to refine the routes to make sure that we're maximizing the ridership. But it is difficult, because the more you change the lines, the more complicated it becomes for folks to understand kind of how to get around. So that's a constant balancing act. The idea of transporting seniors, I know that in the past, we have had conversations in the city, and we've actually acted on providing some intermediate bus service or some transportation services to get seniors around, both to shopping opportunities, as well as to the senior center for senior services. But it's not a perfect system. But I know that it's something that we've always had on the radar. We want to make sure that we continue to look at options or alternatives with which to fund these services or fund these transportation opportunities. But we're always looking for suggestions, and I know that we, our staff, are excited about the prospects of maximizing the services that we've now included at our senior center and our community center.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof, same question.
Yes. The services that we have now is Yolo Bus. And it's not the greatest system in the world, but at the same time, it is something that gets people from point A to point B. And we do have some smaller vans and things that get, especially seniors, to the senior center, doctor's appointments, and things like that. And I think that is also, Yolo Bus is affiliated with that. But they're not, it's not the big bus you see going around. One of the things we think that will happen, if we can get the streetcar, and that is, the streetcar will go from about where City Hall is now. There's a transit center, so to speak, right there. And it'll go across the bridge, and then it'll go to, into Sacramento, and through some shopping areas and some other areas in Old Town, and then over to the depot. We think that that will be something that not only provides ridership for the working folks, but also provides ridership for senior citizens. And it gives them another outlet. I know that, you know, we have some recreation programs that take seniors to various places. Most of the times, the seniors, really, they have to pay for it $5 or whatever it might be. But at the same time, to have a bus system that is, we'll say, like Sacramento, we do not have regional transit, and we don't have those kinds of revenues and those kinds of resources to make all that happen. But I know that transportation is a very, very important issue, and we will continue to tackle the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Myskaev?
It's an issue right now, transportation, but I strongly believe that seniors are supposed to continue, get help, you know, with the transportation, and schools as well. That's what I'm thinking. You know, because I know how it's hard, you know, when a parent's tied up with the kids, you know, and they have to bring kids to the school all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vegas, one minute.
So what I would add to that, the other things that we are, I mean, it's not, there's no one perfect fix to that. So the other things that we are doing in our community, and we're very fortunate in West Sacramento to have a very aggressive Meals on Wheels program. So for those seniors that aren't able to get out of their homes, we have a very active community, and so we're able to provide the Meals on Wheels program. We do have discounted fares through Yolo Bus for seniors. That's always available. And I think the other more important issue is, you know, rather than trying to create a perfect transportation system, we're trying to create senior housing in areas where the services are already there, right? So that, so our attempt is to try to make sure that, and we are, we're going to be, and we're considering some additional senior housing near the riverfront, where those services, services that are most likely to be needed by seniors are going to be in closer proximity. So you don't always have to get on a bus or a car, wait for a van to get to the very services that you need.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit on that. We do, we have done some of that to where seniors are living in an area, well, let's just, as an example, it'd be Maggie's place, McDowell Manor. The post office is there, the store's there, hairdressers are there. There are places that seniors can walk to, because this is a senior facility. There are places that seniors can walk to, and we're trying to do that throughout the city. Quite frankly, I think it is an absolutely marvelous idea compared to additional affordable housing. I think that if you can put a senior complex together, that is something the public is really, they're very, they embrace it. And they think that that is a very good and very wise choice for the expenditures taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myskaev? Okay, thank you. The next question is going to first be directed to Mr. Kristof, and it is from Jim Brewer regarding Measure G. What is your position related to RDA properties that are also important to the preservation of the history of West Sacramento?
I'm sorry. Measure G?
This, the topic is Measure G. Yes.
Measure G. Well, I think Measure G is, it's a good thing. It's good because with the redevelopment agency now gone, and $22 million evaporated with that, that some funding source be built up and banked so that we can use those dollars and bond against those dollars, because we will have probably about $2.5 million coming in each year. Now, $2.5 million for infrastructure, that's a pebble on the beach, folks. It's nothing. But at the same time, if you can bond that money, you can get probably about, I'm going to say, six to seven times the value. So that $2 million becomes $14 million. Now you're starting to get some money that is substantial enough to pay back that bond. Because that $2.5 million comes in each year. And so if it comes in each year, we can build it up to $5 million, $7.5 million, $10 million. And then you've got a pot that is large enough to bond against, so that you can put in the proper amount of infrastructure, so that the development community can say, "Okay, this is a joint partnership between the city and the development community." And with those kinds of partnerships come future development. And development is quite important to us. And I think the community really sort of embraces development. As long as we don't goof it up with inadequate roads or inadequate parks and recreation systems, I think we will be fine.
Thank you. Mr. Myskaev?
I strongly believe that development should continue, you know. And I know it's got to be, it's got to be a source for that. And it's going to be a source for that, to continue development, you know. I know it's not an easy time, but we should stick with that. Thank you.
Mr. Vegas?
So the question, it sounded like it was, can you read it again? Because it had a historic preservation, it had RDA in there. So can you, just make sure I'm understanding?
The question is, what is your position related to quote-unquote, "RDA" properties that are also important to the preservation of the history of West Sacramento?
Well, RDA, the redevelopment agency, so for those who don't know, these are a series of property, well, simplify it. These are properties that we've had throughout the city that we had intentions of using for future development. The state has effectively said, "You need to get rid of these properties." And the state is now driving this, which is just unbelievably, well, it's unbelievable the way in which they're driving this. So we're going to have very, very little say in how we roll this out. But at the end of the day, we're going to have to sell these properties. So the preservation piece, we're going to have very little say in that. At the end of the day, once we sell them, though, those properties that were originally intended to be part of our infrastructure movement, it's going to be essential that we take those funds, and as Bill said, that we use them to leverage other resources to continue to invest in our infrastructure. Because the infrastructure is going, what's going to be used to create jobs and increase the property value that's going to allow us to be a fundamentally sound city. So it all kind of works hand in hand. I don't know how, in my position, I'd love to be able to preserve the historic values of the properties that we have. We just are not going to have a lot of say in that. The state is pretty well, and every day that goes by, they become more and more dictatorial in how they're driving this into the cities. And so we are, we're, it's pretty much out of our hands in terms of how we're going, whether or not we're going to get to preserve any of these properties. So that's kind of a foregone conclusion. It's just a matter of how do we invest this money so, for the better of our community and for the better of our future.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, as Oscar said, it is going to be very difficult. But at the same time, I think that what we have in place now is an oversight committee. And this oversight committee, they seem, it seems to be made up of very level-headed people that are, that understand why the city had this redevelopment property in the first place, whether it be historical or not. But at the same time, if it is historical, I think we can go to the oversight committee, and we can tell them how significant this is from a historical perspective. And they will, in turn, probably vote not to sell the property. Now, here comes Department of Justice, no matter, no, Finance, Department of Finance. Here comes the Department of Finance. And Department of Finance is, like Oscar said, has been very, very dictatorial. And they say, "Sell it anyway." And so we have to find a way in order to make this work. Because right now, it doesn't work.
Thank you. Mr. Myskaev?
Yes, it's a big issue, and it's really hard right now to sell it. And, but it's got to be, find a solution to that, you know, to get rid of that, you know, the properties.
Thank you. And Mr. Vegas?
Just to piggyback on what Bill started to say, and if we don't sell them, we will be dealing with the Department of Justice if we don't do what Department of Finance tells us to do. So he wasn't that far off. But it is, it's a difficult issue. I mean, we have, we have an oversight committee that has some discretion, but it seems like every day that goes by, that discretion diminishes substantially. So as much as I would love to be able to preserve the historic properties, I'm not so much, I'm not so sure we're going to be able to have a whole lot of say in how that gets carried out.
Thank you. The third question will be directed to Mr. Myskaev first. It is from, I apologize to the audience if I'm mispronouncing the name, Gail Klaus. What will you do to improve West Sacramento?
Well, like I said before, it's, in a couple of years, you know, we're going to have a problem in Jefferson, because it's a main street, you know, Jefferson Boulevard. So the best way to connect to I-5, you know, and make, to get out and get in for the people is going to be easier than involved people from out of West Sacramento bring more businesses here. And like another thing, you know, about the rice port, you know, shipment, you know, it's a very cheap way, you know, we can, you know, bring, you know, many ships here, and we have warehouses available. and we have warehouses available. It's going to be good for the city, and make a stronger community and the relationship, like I said, you know, inside the community.
Thank you.
And also, I would love to, you know, bring here to West Sacramento, good sporting events, you know, good names, you know, and because I know lots of them, you know, outlets, you know, and that would be great, you know, for the people.
Thank you. Mr. Vegas?
So I would continue to pursue what the city's identified in its strategic plan, which is, our number one priority is flood protection. If, you know, if heaven forbid something were to happen, nothing else is going to matter. So we have to continue to pursue that number one priority. I would continue to support the use of resources to make sure that that is, that continues to be our number one priority. All along, we need to continue to be fiscally disciplined so that the financial stability of our city remains intact. Right now, we are recognized, as Bill indicated earlier, as one of the, one of the most well-run cities in the region, largely because we're not experiencing the financial difficulties that so many other cities throughout the state, throughout the country for that matter, are experiencing, because we have remained fiscally disciplined. So I would continue to do that. That's what I would offer to continue doing. I would certainly not let, keep my eye, let my eye off the prize of the work that we've done with our crime rate. We've worked for many, many years. Our crime rate was problematic for not only attracting businesses, but keeping businesses and for other amenities. And so we now have one of the lowest crime rates in the region. I would continue to make sure that we have the adequate resources for our public safety, both police and fire. And I would also make sure that we continue to work as a team. None of this, none of the stuff that happens on the city council happens with one person. There are five of us that have to ultimately vote on all the items that we have to consider, and I think, you know, part of our success lends itself to the ability to be a team and to recognize what role we have in that team. There are five people that have to make the decisions, and so what I would contribute, which I think I have done a good job of, is being a team player and understanding the dynamics that go into an elected body, and the politics, setting those aside when appropriate, and getting down to business. So I think we're fortunate to have a good team, and I'd continue to be a good partner.
Thank you. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah. Certainly, the number one issue is flood protection. And I think I explained a little bit about FEMA and how they could really stop the city of West Sacramento from doing anything. We have been working with our federal and state partners, and that includes Department of Water Resources, includes state lands, state FEMA, Corps of Engineers. We've been working with all of those people very, very hard in order to make sure that we do not get caught up in that same bailiwick that the Natomas area did. And so far, knock on wood, we've been very successful. The city of West Sacramento is really sort of a poster child for flood protection. And the reason is, is because a number of years ago, we took our flood protection warning as something was very, very serious. And we have a developer fee for flood protection, as I explained earlier. We have Measure A and B, which donates part of a sales tax to that. And also, we had one other funding mechanism that assists with the flood protection. So that's the number one issue. The number two issue is our budget. I mean, we have done a pretty good job. We've been good stewards of taxpayer money. We're not completely out of the woods. We've got some foreclosure issues that we talked a little bit about earlier, and those are very concerning to us, because when you get into that situation, property taxes are reduced, and that in turns reduce the amount of money, amount of money that can go into your budget. And one of the other things that is sort of hopeful on the side would be future development. There are some things in the pot that we're doing now that will generate tax dollars, and that's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. And Mr. Miskayev?
I'm just going to say that safety is number one priority, so police department and firefighters, it's got to be, you know, supported and become stronger than it's now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vegas?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. And Mr. Kristoff?
One of the things that we may be able to do is some kind of development that, quite frankly, I think the community would be pretty excited about. And that is, we are talking, and I want to emphasize just talking, with a major hotel on the river. That not only creates TOT, or transient occupancy tax, but it creates property tax. It creates some of that energy that we are looking for, so that when other people are looking to invest, they will look at what West Sacramento is doing, and they will further invest. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more question from the audience. We will start again with Mr. Vegas. It is from Pat Flint regarding conflicts of interest. Do you anticipate any conflicts of interest if elected to office?
Do I expect any conflicts of interest if elected to office? Well, I think the, well, let's see, the Fair Political Practices Commission pretty well lays out the rules that govern elected posts such as city council. I've been doing it for 12 years now, and I'm pretty well-versed on what I should and shouldn't do. I'm very well-versed on what I have to report and what I have to report to the city and report to the state. I've done a pretty good job of doing that, so I don't anticipate there being any conflicts. There's no way to tell whether or not things might arise, at which point, I'm, as I said, I'm pretty well-versed in what the law allows and what it doesn't, and what you're required to disclose publicly. So I guess to answer the question, I don't anticipate, but if there are, I will make sure that I comply with the law.
Thank you. Mr. Kristoff?
I don't have any conflict of interest. You know, as we fill out a 700 form every, I guess it's twice a year, and it has to list what properties you have and incomes and all of that sort of thing. But so far, I've never had any conflict of issues. There may be some issue that might pop up as far as some property that you have, another piece of property wants to develop, and you have to abstain from, from that. But so far, so good, no, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miskayev?
I never had a conflict of interest, but I know one thing, you know, that, you know, we have to know what they are, you know, we have to definitely know that they're going to help people, not going to hurt them. So if we're going to have, we have to find the right solution, or it's got to be with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vegas?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Kristoff? Mr. Miskayev? Okay. Now we are going to proceed with closing statements. Each candidate is going to have two minutes for their closing statements, and it is going to be in reverse order. Mr. Miskayev will begin, and Mr. Vegas will finish. The closing statement should not include any charges or attacks against another candidate that have not been previously raised during this forum. Mr. Miskayev, you can begin.
I just want to say, I'm new to this job, city council, but I know one thing, you know, I know my background, and I will never give up. I will continue fight for the city, for its people, you know, and I know there are some issues like with unemployment, you know, and good things has to be done with the city. I will be available, sit down, talk, you know, and I'm a normal person, you know, and it's very easy to figure out what is good, what is not good, but it's got to be financially, financially has to be done right, and that's about it. And it's, like I said, it's a new job for me, and I do my best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank Sir Optimus and the chamber for putting this forum together. I know that putting these kinds of things isn't easy, and, but I would like to thank for the opportunity to speak to our community. And I just hope that the community looks at the things that I have said, looks at the things that I have done, and even looks from a historical perspective for the things that I have done, because I have been there for, like I said, 25 years. And I think the community has evolved, and evolved in a very, very positive way, and I would like to continue to do that. This is, being on the city council is a labor of love, and it's something that I enjoy very much, and it's something that my wife and kids, they truly support what I am doing. And it's for them, and it's for all of you. And so I would just like to have another four more years to continue the things that we're doing and improve our community as best we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vegas?
Great, thank you. So I also would like to thank Sir Optimus for coordinating this. It's a lot of work to get, to bring folks together on a weeknight. Like Bill, I think, you know, we've made so much progress in West Sacramento recently. We truly are recognized in the region on so many levels for all the wonderful things that we're able to do. But this, again, it doesn't happen by one person. All of us have to work together, and those dynamics happen to be humming along pretty nicely here in West Sacramento. I feel very, very proud of where I live, as I know many, many of you do. I feel very fortunate to be able to represent the leadership here in West Sacramento. I think despite these difficult economic times, we've managed to keep our city moving forward. Most folks haven't really, you know, it's not as if, though, you wake up in the morning and say, oh, my goodness, I wish the city would still continue to do X, Y, and Z. We've managed to make across-the-board cuts so that most of our services, most of the amenities that we have in our community, continue to run, continue to be provided for our communities. I feel very good with the way we've been managing our city, and I hope you do, too. I've had a wonderful time working. I work extremely hard on the city council, I have for the last 12 years. And in summary, I'd be honored to continue to work for this community for another four. Thank you.
Thank you. To the audience, we are going to break for an intermission and reconvene with the school board. Thank you to all of our participants.